A call to order the July 1st, 2020, meeting of the James City County Planning Commission. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Rose represents the Roberts District. Ms. Leverens.
Here.
Ms. Leverens is an at-large member and is this year's vice chair. Mr. Pollster.
Here.
Mr. Pollster represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Haldeman.
Here.
Mr. Haldeman represents the Berkeley District. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member. Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District and is this year's chair to the Planning Commission. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county. And also joining us this evening is Mr. Max Hileven, our Deputy County Attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. And as part of our packet tonight, there was a resolution allowing us to conduct a virtual meeting. And just in summary, it states, effectively lays out the fact that on April 14th, 2020, the Board re-adopted the continuity of government operations, which, under certain circumstances, permits this commission to conduct today's meeting by electronic or telephonic means without a quorum of members physically present. And that resolution authorizes us to do that. And so may I have a motion for adoption of the resolution in our packet?
Haldeman moves.
Second, Barbara.
All right, Mr. Holt, would you call the roll?
Ms. Knoll.
Yes, yay.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Can't make out your audio, Mr. O'Connor, could you?
Sorry, let's try that again. Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
And Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public comment period. And this is for any comment on an issue not subject to our two public hearings this evening. Mr. Holt, were there any submissions for the public comment period?
No, sir.
Okay, then I will open it and close it again. Now we go to reports of the commission. Mr. Haldeman, do you have a DRC report?
I do. The DRC met at 4:06 PM on April 22nd, 2020, with all members present. Also present were Ms. Tori Haynes, Mr. Alex Bruke, Mr. Thomas Weisong. The meeting was held electronically under the county's continuity of government ordinance. Site Plan 20-0015. In attendance were Mr. Mark Richardson, Mr. Jesse Young, and Mr. Jeff Stodgill, representing the applicant, Virginia Health Systems. The committee discussed the 1212 roof pitch on the single-story sections as shown in the proposed elevations, which is not consistent with the design guidelines. The steep, pardon me. The steeper pitch, however, hides the mechanical equipment on the rooftop from outside view, and therefore, the committee accepted the pitch. The committee also requested that the applicant and staff work to add windows or other architectural treatments to some of the vertical towers. DRC unanimously recommended preliminary approval of the plan, subject to addressing all outstanding agency comments, and receiving final approval within one year from the date of issuance, and also unanimously recommended approval of the elevation with adjustments. With regard to C-20-0054, Ms. Diane Newman represented PW Development Incorporated, which is applying for a waiver from Section 24-200C of the zoning ordinance, requiring that all utility connections be placed underground. The applicant has requested a waiver to this requirement because they were unable to gain an underground easement on adjacent properties. Dominion is instead proposing to connect an overhead power line from a new 36-foot, 6-inch-high pole to be located on 168 Bush Springs Road property to a new 36-foot, 6-inch-high pole to be located on the other side of Bush Springs Road. The DRC voted unanimously to recommend approval of the waiver. Respectfully, Jack Haldeman, that's me.
Thank you, Mr. Haldeman. Are there any questions for Mr. Haldeman at this point?
I have one. It actually occurred to me after the meeting, I'm sorry to say. But with regard to the waiver for the underground wiring, couldn't Dominion get access to the property by eminent domain? I don't know why it didn't occur to me that night, but it did.
Yeah.
I didn't want to wait. This is on the, both of these are on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, right.
And I didn't know if that allowed for questions, so.
Yeah, I thought we touched on that, but I may have been mistaken on it. I assumed that because it's a utility line for a different parcel that crosses another property owner's parcel, they needed that other property owner's permission. But I may not be correct on that, but that.
Well, anyway, we voted unanimously to recommend approval, so.
This is Julie. My recollection is that they had a waiver or they had an easement for an overhead power line, and the property owners were not willing to grant an easement for an underground property line.
Yeah, that's absolutely the case. I was just wondering why Dominion couldn't take it, whether they wanted them to or not, but.
And I suggest that we pull that item from the consent calendar and ask Mr. Hileven for his legal opinion. Will we get to that?
Yeah, when we get to that point, you're more than welcome to do that. Any other questions for Mr. Haldeman on his report? Okay. Mr. Pollster, do you have anything for policy?
Nothing, we did not meet, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. And consent agenda items are deemed to be non-controversial. However, a planning commissioner can pull an item for further discussion. Tonight, there are three items on the consent agenda. The first is the minutes of our June 30, I'm sorry, June 3rd, 2020 regular meeting. Next is the DRC Development Review Committee Action Item C-20-0054, 164 and 168 Bush Springs Road Overhead Utility Waiver. And third is the Development Review Committee Action Item SP-20-0015, Virginia Health Services Colonial Heritage.
Yeah, this is Mr. Pollster. I'd like to pull both C-20-0054 and SP-20-0015, please.
All right. So those two items will be pulled for discussion. And Mr. Holt, just as a clarification, do we just deal with the one consent agenda item that's remaining and then discuss the other two separately?
It would just be a voice vote on the minutes of your June 3rd regular meeting.
That's what I thought, okay. So the only item left on the consent agenda is the June 3rd regular meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Don't move, this is Ms. Leverens.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. DRC item C-20-0054, Overhead Utility Waiver, has been pulled. I'll open it up to the person who pulled it.
Yeah, this is Mr. Pollster. I'd like to direct the question to Mr. Hileven on Mr. Haldeman's question on if the Dominion power has any standing for eminent domain in terms of the easement piece.
Sure, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So Dominion Power, like other public, well, they're special because they're a public utility, but like other municipal corporations, does have the power of eminent domain, but it's only for things that are going to be put to public use. So if it's an easement for a private residence over another private property, that probably doesn't fall within their eminent domain powers.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the overhead easement item? If not, may I have a motion to approve that particular item?
Haldeman moves.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item for discussion is SP-20-0015, Virginia Health Services Colonial Heritage.
I defer to my colleague Barbara Knoll for the questions that she asked Mr. Holt today, if I can. Barbara?
Yes, I've had a few residents here ask me certain questions about the development. And here were the two questions that came up mostly. Number one is that Magnolia Lane, which is the access road at the light across from the pottery. That's part of the parcel that Virginia Health Services has purchased. Our understanding here, living at Colonial Heritage, is we are not allowed to use that road at all. However, people are still using it. Also, Colonial Heritage is using it as a construction road at the moment. But they should be done using it by the time this project proceeds. But one of the questions was from residents, how or when will they cut off the end of Magnolia Road as an access as Colonial Heritage Boulevard, which is a private road inside our gated community? And number two, I read a paragraph that said that the construction company would have access during construction to Colonial Heritage Boulevard, which I question highly because there is absolutely no reason for them to be on our road as they have an access road to their property, starting at Route 60.
Mr. Holt?
Ms. Knoll, members of the commission, I don't have those answers ready for you this evening. We're happy to follow up with the development team and/or Lennar and get those responses. And we'll get those sent out to you just as soon as we can.
Thank you.
All right. And I'm thinking that that's more of an administrative issue, and that shouldn't preclude a vote on this particular consent agenda item tonight. Would anyone care to move that for approval?
Haldeman moves.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Who was the opposed? Was it, Mr. O'Connor, you had your hand up?
I was just going to comment that typically while under developer control, the declarant reserves the right to provide easements over roads. I don't know that that's the case at Colonial Heritage, but that's typical language. And I was in agreement for approval.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. All righty. Well, then, now move to public hearings. And the first public hearing is SUP 20-0009, 3303 Rochambeau Drive Tourist Home. Mr. Meadows?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Ms. Ivy Brothers has applied for a special use permit to allow for the short-term rental of an entire four-bedroom home as a tourist home at 3303 Rochambeau Drive. The property is zoned A1 general agriculture, is designated low-density residential on the comprehensive plan land use map, and is located inside the primary service area. Ms. Brothers is the owner and will live off-site during guest stay and live onsite between guests. Short-term rental tenants will use an existing parking area located on the property. No changes to the home's footprint are proposed. Staff consider the home's residential character, location along a major collector road, parking provisions, and screening all to be favorable factors in the valuation of this application. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include limitations on the number of rooms rented and total number of rental occupants per stay. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with the comprehensive plan zoning ordinance and surrounding development, and recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this application, subject to the proposed conditions. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I believe the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Any questions for staff? All righty. In that case, are there any disclosures? And by that, I mean any planning commissioners who met with the applicant or the applicant's attorney or anything like that? There's any disclosures, please speak up. Okay. At this point, I will now open the public hearing and afford the applicant the opportunity to make a statement. You're certainly not required to. But if you would like to say anything, you are more than welcome to do that.
No, I guess, thank you for listening. I hope that the home can be used as a tourist home. I believe it will be a benefit to the James City County and the Tohono area. We will be hiring part-time people to care for the home and the cleaning and the maintenance and the yard work. So I just thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brothers. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Mr. Holt, were there any speaker cards submitted?
Just the applicant, Mr. Chairman, no others.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll close the public hearing and turn it to the Planning Commission for discussion or a motion. I will say, I did drive by the site and I looked at it. And from, in my personal opinion, this is exactly the type of location that lends itself to this type of short-term rental use from the standpoint that it's on a major transportation route, and it's set back from the road, that's, there's no neighbors close by. And so I plan to support the application. Anybody else?
Ms. Leverens, I assume that the neighboring property owners were notified and nobody complained?
I did see a sign, a special use permit sign posted on the property. So I assume the neighbors were also notified. Mr. Holt?
They do. Our adjoining property owner notifications, do you receive any communications, one way or the other, from anybody on this one?
We did not receive comments or communications. Thank you. Any further? Go ahead.
Yes, this is for, I'm sorry.
Let me just continue that I have a continuing, and you've heard this before, concern about the, an SUP for a tourist home is in perpetuity. And we had discussed in the past about how in the current comprehensive plan we need to, well, as part of the comprehensive plan action items, we need to take a look at whether there should be some sunset provisions put on SUPs.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Pollster. I share your concern on this one specifically. And I find the staff's analysis, in terms of the comprehensive plan, to be lacking in any way that we could look at it outside of the arterial road piece that this meets. But the other two pieces there of noise and lighting could apply to anything. And the provide adequate screening could apply to anything in terms of managing tourist homes within the county. But more disturbing to the point that Julia is making about the lack of a sunset clause. If you take a look at the surrounding properties as they are today and look at what we are going to be looking at in the 2045 models, this area of the county from Anderson Corner and the adjacent areas are going to be developed. And we will find this tourist home in the middle of a bunch of subdevelopments. And you need only look at the current number of subdevelopments that exist today and where this place is located to understand that it will be, if we allow this thing to go forward, because it subscribes to the property, not a timeframe, which I object to strenuously. Having said that, I would ask that if there is the possibility to put a sunset clause on this for the period of ownership, then I would support it. If not, I wouldn't. Thank you.
You know, part of my, this is rich, part of my dilemma is that I feel constrained by existing ordinances. And we are not allowed to impose a sunset clause on a special use permit that was done away with by the board a few years ago. And Mr. Hileven, please correct me if you've got any additional information. So I feel, in a sense, that it's disingenuous to allow applicants to go through the financial cost and the administrative burden of submitting an SUP, trying to stay within the existing ordinances, and for us to, you know, potentially deny it because we feel the ordinances don't have sufficient restrictions. Now, I personally, you know, would agree with the idea of a sunset clause, but I feel that I have to vote on this application based on the existing ordinances. And so that's sort of my dilemma, even though I do personally agree. And when I was the PC rep to the Board of Supervisors last month, that was one of the issues that I stressed to the board. That's a real sticking point with the Planning Commission in general. But anyway, that's sort of where I feel like I'm stuck in the middle on that particular issue of a sunset clause. Any other comments? I see Mr. O'Connor. Again, would they?
Yeah, I would, I would like to offer, I do agree with Mr. Croft that currently, the way the law in our ordinances are written, that we do not have the ability to apply a sunset clause to this. And if there were an application that meets what the, I think, was the original intent of the tourist home language, this home does meet quite a few of those. I remain challenged, if you will, with these short-term rentals. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that most of the applicants are bringing forward some sort of brokering agency, whether it's Airbnb, VRBO, or any of the others that are out there, even other management companies. This does give me pause in that, again, this is another home that I believe falls into what would fall well within our housing opportunities considerations. And, you know, we heard in the Oakland application for the apartments, the need for affordable housing, especially in close proximity to the Stonehouse Industrial Park, which, this is in fairly close proximity to that. We also recently received, I don't know if everybody saw it, but from the Williamsburg Area Realtors Association, a report they provided for the Comp Plan 2045. And in there, they raised the issue that we continue to see in James City County, units that are owned but not occupied by the owner. And I recognize that we have the ability to lease our homes and put it out there. But again, it causes me a lot of concern when we're adding to the, we're removing affordable housing from that housing stock and increasing the absentee owner count in the county. So, you know, for all those reasons that I have created, especially in light of the number of people who are now unemployed through the COVID-19 and pandemic, you know, whether it's, well, primarily in the hospitality and tourism industry. You know, I think this is just another, another one that takes away from anything that could go towards those industries that actually employ full-time positions with benefits. So for those reasons, I don't intend to support this application.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Anybody else?
This is Rob.
Go ahead, Rob.
I appreciate all the comments, and I have the same concerns, not necessarily specifically about this instance, but every time these come up, we have, I feel like, a similar discussion that these are a challenge for the community. There's issues about affordable housing. But for me, I feel like until we have some process to evaluate them all on the same level playground or playfield, I have to just go with the rules and restrictions that are in place. And it seems to me that the rules and restrictions that are in place support approving this, without any other indication. without any other indication or reason to reject this. So I think it's an argument that we need to take steps to either solidify the rules and regulations around approving these and until we do treat them all fairly and equally as we
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Barbara and just from our training that Rob and I've been going through, they say if a parcel meets all the ordinances, then we have no choice than to accept it. I don't personally agree, but that's what's out there. If the applicant has met all the requirements, then how can we turn it down?
I do know that
It's Tim. I'll just say for myself, because I seem to be the one who is mostly in the no category on these. I find, you know, when I do my research into the Comp Plan, you know, when it talks about supporting our tourism, our employers who, you know, the goal strategies and actions in our Comp Plan talk about creating jobs with paying benefits. It talks about supporting the hospitality industry, which I believe is our number two employer. At least it was in the last Comp Plan. You know, that's where I take my guidance from. So again, I think we can rely on the Comp Plan as a guiding document. And, you know, I think that's why I've been also leading the push to say, hey, we need to have this conversation in our Comp Plan. Because, you know, I do think that there is a place for some of these homes. You know, but until we get to that point, I just don't feel it's consistent with the Comp Plan.
See, and I, this is Rich again, and I can say, I think you can look other places in the Comp Plan, for example, and say that one of the objectives is to foster tourism. And so one could argue that by having short-term rentals available, we could get out of the area tourists to possibly stay longer. And it might be more affordable for them to do a short-term rental than a brick-and-mortar hotel or something like that. And so it is, as everybody's pointing out, it's a difficult discussion. And if you saw the board meeting last month, they were also similarly conflicted. But because, you know, you can find some elements that might not seem to be to support the Comp Plan. I feel that there are other elements associated with short-term rentals that do support the Comp Plan. So I do hope that we're able, as the current engaged 2045 Comp Plan process moves forward. This is a topic that I think we definitely need to grapple with and try to come up with something to Mr. Rose's point that puts a level playing field out there for everyone.
This is Frank again. When I cited the staff report of those three elements that they said were in the Comp Plan, which I've sent to you all earlier on this discussion of the lack of any specific requirements, you won't find the word tourist home associated with any of the four items that you see here. They pertain to residential areas and character, not to tourist homes. And the only way that you see any language about tourist homes are in the zoning ordinances in terms of which residential areas you can have that. And so the criteria that's in the comprehensive plan that is stated in the staff report, if you go look at it, doesn't state tourist home. So you can't apply it to the discussion we're having here and all the ancillary issues that we've been talking about for the last two years. And so once again, what the Comp Plan is supposed to do is talk about the future of where we're headed. When you make this decision, you're saying in 2045, when this is in the middle of a bunch of residential areas, which is where the development and population growth is going to happen in the county, that it's okay in perpetuity to have a tourist home in the middle of a bunch of sub developments? That is why I'm objecting to this. And the language is not in the Comp Plan to support tourist homes as stated by the staff. There's not a word that says tourist homes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jack Haldeman, this is a pretty nifty trick, but I agree with all of you. Even though you all disagree, I do. But in this one case, this is not suitable for affordable housing, just to get that off the table. Affordable housing has to be close to job opportunities, close to public transportation and the like. This is kind of out there. With regard to Frank's concerns about this all being developed and so forth, that's yet to be determined. There are, we're undergoing a revision of the comprehensive plan, which will also include a revision of the land use map. So we're not sure exactly how this will go. You see Whitehall right next to the parcel, which is another indication of the sprawl development that's been promoted in this county for the last 50 years. But it doesn't necessarily have to continue. So there's no question that we need to resolve this. There's no question that this needs to be part of the comprehensive plan discussion. And, you know, I thought it was settled. I was on the policy committee when we redid the tourist home ordinance, I guess it was two or three years ago. And I readily admit that we probably could have done a better job. I could have done a better job. I didn't fully understand and appreciate the implications of this and didn't foresee the wave of applicants that we've had since then. Still in all, in this particular case, not a global case, just this particular case. It fits everything we have on the books right at the moment, as Ms. Knoll said. And I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Haldeman. Anybody else?
You know, I would like to dispute one thing Mr. Haldeman says. You know, I live in Toino and I walk Richmond Road fairly regularly down to Forge Road and beyond. And, you know, I think people would be quite surprised, both in my walking and commuting through the area, at how many people who live out that way who A, ride bikes to the bus stops, put them on the buses, B, walk to jobs and hitchhike, and C, ride scooters. To say that, you know, being within half a mile of Stone House Commerce Park is not close to a work spot is just incorrect. So, you know, I'd like to offer a little different perspective of life in Jame City County as you go further out of the more developed areas in town.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Anybody else? If not, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve S U P 20-0009-3303 Rochambeau Road with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Haldeman. Mr. Holt, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
No.
Ms. Leverens?
No.
And Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is ordinance-19-0010, zoning ordinance amendments to address the keeping of bees in residential neighborhoods. And I believe Mr. Garvin from the Williamsburg Beekeepers Association is also sitting in on this call. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Costello for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. On October 8th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors adopted an initiating resolution directing staff to address beekeeping in residential and agricultural districts. The keeping of bees is currently permitted in A1 General Agriculture, R6 Low Density Residential, and R8 Rural Residential. Therefore, staff proceeded with research in beekeeping as a use in residential districts. Accordingly, staff analyzed neighboring localities regulations as well as the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Best Management Practices in Chapter 44 of the Virginia State Code. The Policy Committee directed staff to develop performance standards based on the B M Ps of the state of Virginia and the regulations in Albemarle County's zoning ordinance. During the discussion at the March meeting, the Policy Committee also discussed beekeeping in commercial districts. However, after consulting with the county attorney's office, the initiating resolution directed staff to review beekeeping in residential and agricultural districts only. In order to add commercial districts to the discussion, it would be necessary to amend the initiating resolution. Since mixed use has the potential for both commercial and residential uses on a property, it was not included in this analysis. The Policy Committee made a recommendation to the Planning Commission to review beekeeping as a use in commercial districts. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the draft ordinance presented in the materials for tonight's meeting to the Board of Supervisors. Staff also recommends that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to review beekeeping as a use in commercial districts. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costello. Any questions for staff? Okay. In that case, I will open the public hearing and Mr. Holt, do we have any cards submitted?
We only have the one from, as you mentioned, Mr. Michael John Garvin.
Okay. Mr. Garvin, you have the floor.
Thank you all for inviting me. I appreciate this very much. Like I said, my name is Michael Garvin. I'm a retired Army officer and I happen to also be the president of the Williamsburg Area Beekeepers. We currently have over 100 members in our group living in all sorts of places in the greater Williamsburg area. We initiated this based on one of my members over a year ago lost all of her hives, which she owned on the same property for over four years without incident. Due to one complaint, not an incident, not a sting, not just a complaint, she lost all her, lost all joy in beekeeping and her livelihood from beekeeping because she's in a residential zone. Bees have been in America since 1622 and they originated in Jamestown, Virginia. So the U.S. owes beekeeping to Jamestown, Virginia. They are here whether we manage them on our property in a residential or rural setting, no matter what. Honeybees are not aggressive and don't go out to sting people. We are asking the resolution to be written to allow beekeeping without restrictions or threat of loss of hobby, income, and investment. Hampton happens to be now a bee city as well as Norfolk. Charlottesville has authorized beekeeping in their residential areas. And it's just amazing that beekeeping started here in Jamestown, but now we cannot in certain areas. This is, I believe this is long overdue and I appreciate this board's bringing all the attention to it. And I look forward to meeting with the Jame City Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garvin. Thank you for joining us tonight. And since Mr. Garvin was the only speaker request, I will close the public hearing and defer to the Planning Commission for discussions or a motion. But let me get one administrative point with Mr. Holt if I can. Mr. Holt, if there's a motion to approve, can that motion be bundled with a recommendation for the board to also direct us to look at beekeeping in commercial areas or do these have to be two separate motions?
No, you can put them together.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Again, I'll turn to the Planning Commission for discussion and/or a motion on this case.
I was going to make a comment, but Mr. Crop took the words right out of my mouth. I just hope we do include that recommendation too. There's no reason to include, there's no reason not to include beekeeping in any zoning district as far as I'm concerned, so.
That sounds like a motion to me, Jack.
Well, I don't want to preclude anybody else.
Oh, no, we don't have to vote on the motion. We can have further discussion. But if you'd like to put the motion out there, we'll see if there's any more discussion.
I so do move O R D 19-0010, Keeping of Bees Ordinance Amendment.
And with the recommendation that
With the recommendation that the Board of Supervisors consider an initiation resolution to expand it to commercial areas and to all districts.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Does the Board of Supervisors, just a question, does the Board of Supervisors have the authority to just go ahead and extend it to commercial? Without having it come back up?
No, because that's not part of the advertised public hearing. That would need to go back to the beginning of the process.
Okay, thank you.
This is Frank. I just wanted to offer a supporting comment to the approval nomination. And in the last discussion that was in front of the Policy Committee, which I attended, what was interesting for Mr. Garvin was, and the reason that I thought that the commercial area, so that every area in the county could have the benefit of these pollinators, was that the city of Williamsburg with the Meadry that is located near the Ace's Hardware Store in that complex across from on Monticello where they're buying a building, actually has a beehive on top of, in their area, in a commercial area. It's also true that the commercial activities are using their rooftops in urban areas for beehives for. The last comment that I wanted to make that came up is I raised the issue on whether or not the public lands that the county owns and specifically the area out in Freedom Park where the Williamsburg Botany Club has, is whether or not it's possible for that. And the answer was that public lands are included in this. And I hope at some point that Beekeeping Association is able to be able to populate some of the beekeeping hives within those public areas, which seems to me to be a wonderful idea, especially the locations that we have for our public parks. And I am supportive of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Polster. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Holt, we have a motion. If you'd call the roll, please.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
And Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to Planning Commission considerations. And I'll need, I'm going to need two motions. What, because we're having the Planning Commission Working Group meeting on Monday, July 13th at 4:00 P. M., we need a motion to amend the Planning Commission calendar to add that. And then we'll need a second motion to approve it. But at this point, I'm just looking for a motion to amend the Planning Commission calendar to add the P C Working Group on Monday, July 13th at 4:00 P. M.
Mr. Crop, can I, let me just clarify for, just for purposes of the record. So the motion for right now is to amend the Planning Commission's agenda for tonight to consider amending the P C calendar.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, the motion to amend the agenda for this evening to include consideration of the calendar change.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we can do a voice vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Excuse me for that. Then, we would take a motion to approve the addition of the PC working group to the PC calendar.
So moved, Barbara.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. So, that's done. And Mr. Holt, planning director's report?
Thank you very much. I was just going to, again, just for purposes of the minutes, clarify that that addition was for Monday, the 13th at 4:00 p.m.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, other than what's been printed and included as part of your agenda packet tonight, I don't have anything additional for the planning director's report, but if you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to try to answer.
Mr. Holt, this is Frank Polster. I wanted to go back to the spirited conversation that the board had on tourist homes the last time. And as I recall, there was this notion that the planning commission would take the tourist home under advisement. Can you share with us your ideas of how that's going to proceed, or is that an item for the PCWG on the 13th?
I don't think it's going to come up on the 13th. I had, along with Mr. Croft, in his presentation on the planning commission action, that certainly made the board aware that one of the planning commission's stated priorities for this comp plan update was to try to come up with some additional standards and some additional guidance in the comp plan that could help better inform and better help with the analysis for future short-term rental applications. I think, I think some of that discussion and some of that intent and desire played out again tonight with the current application. I think, I think based on the issues that the planning commission raised, I think the board was supportive of that. You know, the board meeting will come up here on July 14th in terms of any possible next steps. I think the board at that last meeting had asked the county attorney for some additional advice and direction on, certainly, the application you consider tonight was already in queue, that that one should be scheduled and moved on to the board's supervisors for a scheduled public hearing, but that getting back some advice and taking from the county attorney's office and possibly taking some action on July 14th, where the board might consider not putting additional short-term rental SUP applications on their agenda until a point in the future, at which time, sort of those criteria and those considerations and that component of the comp plan process is a little bit known. County attorney advised at the last meeting that, under current code, we can't extend, the board can't, the board has up to a year to put items on the agenda, so the timeline could not extend beyond that. So, planning staff is working currently with the county attorney's office to figure out that timeline, working with the comp plan team here in the planning office to figure out when those conversations will come up in the context of the comp plan update. Probably going to be a little bit later this summer, maybe this fall. It definitely won't be on the 13th. But again, you know, the idea that the board is very interested in working with the commission to revisit this idea, and of course, finding it very important and transparent to let applicants know that, hey, if you apply between now and then, there's, there's, that there's a desire to not get the, not get a future case scheduled in front of the board until those criteria would come up, and of course, letting applicants know that whatever those criteria may end up being could possibly have a material impact on how the case is analyzed and whether or not such an application was ultimately deemed acceptable. So, again, apologize, that's a little bit of a long-winded response to your questions. I hope I covered it for you.
No, I think I understand the $1,200 that it takes to submit this, and I understood Mr. Croft's point about the current one that we heard, that they did submit that within good faith. And so, I get that, but there was also the discussion that the planning commission and the board of supervisors would possibly meet to discuss and exchange some ideas, and the notion that the planning commission already has some thoughts on. And I'm just trying to understand what the schedule's going to be, whether we are going to meet with the board of supervisors to discuss this or not, or whether or not it's going to go into some other process. And that's the reason for the question.
So, again, the answer is yes, yes, and yes. Yes, we are going to be scheduling a joint meeting between the planning commission and board. You know, part of that, part of the joint work session, there'll probably be more than one between now and next July when we get the full comp plan in front of the board. But as soon as we're able to, within all of the framework of all of the things that we need to update into the comp plan, you know, staff's going to be working to schedule that exercise with the commission to have that more in-depth. And, you know, once we get to a point where we've got some consensus and some input that we can share with the board, we'll meet with that. And again, as mentioned, the board is interested in pulling those out and arriving at that with, in collaboration with the planning commission, well in advance of next July, because they didn't, as I was recommending to the board, don't need to wait until the 100% of the comp plan is updated to try to tackle this piece. And once we've got consensus, it's straightforward enough to sort of pull this piece out and have those, and have those elements to go. No need on waiting for the, for the full comp plan at the very end. So, yes, we will be meeting that. Yes, we'll be doing that. Again, I don't yet have that date when that joint planning commission board meeting will occur, where we will talk about this, but it will definitely happen before the final adoption of the comp plan. So, we're working on that scheduling now.
I only ask this question based on the comments that I made tonight on the one case, and that I hope that when we get to the comp plan language and we get to the residential standards that were stated within tonight's case, that were more specific as to what applies to a tourist home versus a rental property versus a residential neighborhood. And those distinctions, I hope, are made within the staff recommendations that we'll see for the language, because that would go a long way to help clarifying the comp plan, plan guidances that exist today and how we apply it to future cases. And so, I hope in this process that we go through, that we're more precise in how we delineate between tourist homes versus rental properties that are more long-term, so that we can better judge when we get a case, where that line is.
Thank you, Mr. Polster. And I see Mr. O'Connor had a hand up. Did you want to say anything, Tim?
If I could, if my colleagues would indulge me for a second. I did watch the recent board of supervisors meeting, and I would hope that we could capture in the minutes. I would implore the board of supervisors to not delay hearing any cases. We have a duly adopted comp plan. We have a duly adopted set of ordinances, and I think the ability to file an application and, you know, for an SUP is certainly with some, somebody's rights. I understand it's the board's right to delay hearing it, but I feel very strongly, even though I am not a big proponent, as it is currently written, I don't think that we should deprive our residents the opportunity to make application and not have it heard in a timely fashion while we sort through this.
Here, here. Thank you, Tim. Anybody else?
Yeah, this, Ms. Leverens, I'm going to respectfully disagree with what Tim just said, because I fear that if, well, word will get out that the board is going to take a very hard look at tourist homes, assuming that they are, which I wholeheartedly support. And if that happens, I suspect that we might be flooded with applications in advance of that happening. So, there are a couple of ways to look at that. Just want to put that out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I assume if an application came forward down the road and the board opted to defer it for a year, and in that intervening year, the ordinance changed, would the board be required to look at the application based on the ordinances in place at the time the application was submitted to the planning commission? Or would it be evaluated based on the current ordinances at the time the board had their public hearing for that application? How does, how would that work?
So, I'll let Max chime in with the more legal answer if he, if he so desires. You know, I certainly think that the board's contemplation of perhaps taking some action on July 14th would look to avoid any of that potential disconnect. I think by stating their intent to revisit the criteria and to have staff affirmatively notify applicants that, you know, hey, if you want to file, just please be aware and please know that these standards are currently under review and that they may impact the review criteria. Ultimately, I take from that, that it would be the board's desire, again, not speaking on behalf of them, but just gleaning from the conversation, I think it would be the board's hope and expectation that an applicant would hold off so that they would be fully informed prior to applying, so that the board would feel comfortable and the planning commission would feel comfortable looking at those applications in the context of whatever new criteria may be adopted.
See, and that's where I'm coming from with my comment. I agree with Julie on a couple points that we could get a flood of them, but also, to me, it's, it's not, even though you give the applicant warning ahead of time that it could be 12 months and the, and the litmus test could change, I still, you know, have some problems with that approach. I think you're better off just saying to the applicant right off front, right up front, we're review, as Paul said, we're reviewing the standards. When it, when your application gets to the board, it might be 12 months from now, and there may be different standards, but it's, you know, your choice if you want to do the first hurdle, but you certainly won't get ultimately, ultimate approval in all likelihood prior to 12 months. I think that's just fair and transparent for the applicants. Any other discussion?
I have a question on a different subject from the planning director's report, if I may.
Sure. Jack, let me do this. Let me, if there's no other questions on the planning director's report, we'll just move to?
No, it is on the planning director's report. I'm sorry. It's just a different, it's just a different subject. I was just wondering how many land use applications have been received so far, and as I understand it, we're past the cutoff, so there can't be any further ones, but how many so far?
We are. Mr. Haldeman, I don't have a grand total. I think we received a total of three applications from property owners, and we have a couple of potential housekeeping ones that we're developing internally, and that's consistent with what we do every, every comp plan update. I just can't, I can't remember here off the top of my head what our internal list was. We're sort of still developing and vetting that, but from external, from applicants, from current landowners, I believe we received three.
And am I right about we've passed the deadline, so there'll be no more?
Correct.
And how does the internal review work in general terms? Don't, don't go into each individual one, but, I mean, what are you looking for when you, when the planning staff looks at revising a land use?
Sure. So, just generally, it's not as detailed, obviously, but it's probably analogous to a rezoning, right? Because at the end of the day, sort of the overarching thought process of changing a land use designation is a little bit analogous to a rezoning, sort of conceptually only, not legally, of course, in that, you know, you've got a piece of land where the ultimate growth and build-out is envisioned for one thing, and you're amending the policy document to possibly considering different land use. So, you know, at a, at a high level, it's not atypical for a rezoning. So, you know, we'll send the applications out to all of the other reviewing agencies, do some high-level reviews there, and, you know, in terms of land use impacts, it's, it's not too different from a, from a rezoning in concept, if that answers your question.
It does, but provokes another one, I guess. What are your, what are your criteria? What's the planning staff's criteria when they look at changing a land use for a particular parcel?
Well, you know, again, it's all of the things that you would normally expect to see for big land use changes, right? So, you know, potential feedback from JCSA on impacts or concerns from a water sewer point of view, impacts that may be coming from traffic. It could be fiscal-related. It could be, again, sort of high-level, sort of impacts for environmental concerns. You know, again, sort of categorically, a lot of the same things that you would still see with the, with the rezoning, but again, obviously, the level of detail is very different because you, we don't have a fully developed package that you would typically have with a rezoning. It's a little bit more conceptual in nature, just, just given what it is and given where it is in the timeline, because even with a land use change, you know, remember, again, the idea would be that that would precede a future request for the rezoning itself. The rezoning would still need to come through. So, you know, you would, from a legislative action point of view, if you end up finding yourself okay with a potential land use change, that's not the end-all, be-all. You would still see a subsequent rezoning one, rezoning application come through. Maybe as an example, the EO designation that you did on the last comp plan for up at the Hazelwood property, you know, we're, we're working with that development team now on the rezoning proposal that would need to have a similar legislative process with public hearing, planning commission and board, so.
Do you use any of the findings from the C, the current CPT, you know, the survey, the five themes, any of that? Does that, does that go into your discussions when you're considering a land use change?
So, it, I mean, it's an interesting question. There's a little bit of a push-pull, right? Because the idea of the comp plan update in the timeline is sort of updating the comp plan all at once, and that includes updating the chapters and updating the GSAs based on the, based on the input, at the same time that you're wanting to create that land use map that goes with it. And of course, part and parcel to creating an updated land use map are both the applications themselves, as well as all the public input. So, I think it helps inform the analysis. I, I wouldn't say that we would use the input to date as part of the current update as firm policy, because it's a lot like the rest of the comp plan updated. It's sort of all in process, and up until the point that the board adopts the new comp plan as the new countywide policy document, right, it's kind of like anything. It's sort of subject to change all the way up until the last minute. It's sort of subject to change all the way up until the last minute, so.
One last question, and do, do the landowners that you're looking at, that they know that you're looking at their, possibly redesignating their property?
Yes, because again, those are, are, you mean for the county-owned ones?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're only looking at the county-owned ones?
No, 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 we're looking at all of them. I'm sorry, was your, was your question?
If, if you're, if you're looking?
Do property owners know that we're?
Yes, that's, that was my question.
That one? You know, certainly, certainly the ones that, I, I'll use a modern TV show reference, the ones that make it through to the next level.
Right.
You know, we're sort of still in the brainstorming stage, but yes, I mean, that would, that would be, that would, that would be part of, part of the process if, if, you know?
Thank you very much.
Wouldn't be a surprise to anybody. Yeah, 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 it wouldn't be a surprise to anybody.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Any other questions on Planning Director's Report or for Mr. Holt? All right. We now move to Planning Commission discussion and requests. And the only items, the only item I have is Board of Supervisor coverage for July is Ms. Knoll. And does anyone have anything that they'd like to add under this agenda item? If not, I would like to wish everybody a happy July 4th, and I'd look for a motion to adjourn to the PC Working Group to be held on Monday, July 13th at 4:00 PM.
So moved, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all, and again, happy holiday.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.